The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Morin, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank. The Difference is Leadership. Member FDIC. Equal Housing Lender.
Uh, roll call. Ms. Clerk.
Alderman Marshall.
Alderman Telfry.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderman Henderson.
Here.
Alderman Frager.
Here.
Alderman Burks.
Yeah.
We've got several minutes for meetings that we need approval. I know that the minutes for August the 10th and our meeting on Sunday 6th, 21st, and FDIC approved as emails been presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve all of the minutes. All those in favor by a show of hands. Unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the city clerk's report.
Revenue received from general fund for year-to-date was $2,221,343.11. Expenses are $1,996,267.66. Admin revenue $25,000. Expenses $252,971.3. The law enforcement revenue was $35,662.27. Expenses $709,272.15. Department of Parks revenue $21,677.76. Sanitation revenue $474,781.88. Building cost revenue $13,605.44. District court revenue $45,336.96. Expenses $60,433.11. Municipal building expenses $23,836.80. Recreation revenue $9,792.80. Expenses $105,822.40. Culture center revenue $4,936.41. Expenses $7,779.17. Armory labor center revenue $3,175. Shooting range revenue $20,501.12. Other revenue $3,200. Expenses $8,896. Airports revenue $4,694.54. The street department's revenue $340,997.17. Other funds income statement.
Move that move and put financial report.
Second. All those, uh, we have a motion and second to approve financial report. All of those in favor by a show of hands. Unanimous.
So you should have a office cash balance for it. The income received in city sales, uh, revenue received in city sales for the month of August, $84,256.91. We're up about 3% from this time last year. County tax will receive $57,106.20. And we're up about 4% from the same time last year. You should have a copy of your district court's statement.
That ends our review. Thank you. All right, uh, in your package you have the resignation of Ms. Brenda Bass on the Parks and Recs Commission. And then you have a, uh, quick little, short little bio for Mr. Jerry Butler, um, for his appointment to the Parks and Recs Commission. Move that, Mr. Butler, we approve.
Second.
All those, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve Jerry Butler, uh, on the Parks and Recs Commission. All of those in favor by a show of hands. Unanimous. Okay. Now then, uh, the shooting range bids, you've got a copy of those. Uh, what I'd like to have is a motion to reject the bids because they were all way over. And then an opportunity to re-bid on the advice of the engineer and also game and fish.
I make a motion to reject the bids.
Second. We have a motion to reject the bids and a second. All those in favor by a show of hands. Unanimous. And then a bid, I mean, a motion to re-bid, please. I move that we re-bid, uh, the shooting range. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to re-bid. All those in favor by a show of hands. Uh, unanimous. Okay. And then you also have a copy of the bid for the municipal airport reconstru-, the apron construction. And a motion to accept this bid. It was right in line with what the, uh, grant is that we're getting and the engineer was pleased. Move that we accept the bid of $578,437, uh, senior civic construction. Second. Okay, I have a motion to accept, uh, and a second to accept the bid for the municipal airport apron reconstruction. All those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Uh, and then we have a resolution that it's a yearly obligation to, um, read this. Okay. Resolution number A652. It's a resolution requesting the Bradley County Court to levy, levy a five-mill tax on all taxable property in the city of Morin, Arkansas. Bid resolved by the City Council of Morin, Arkansas. Whereas it is determined that a five-mill tax levy is necessary for proper financing and operations of the city government of Morin, Arkansas. Now therefore be it resolved at the form court be, and it is hereby requested to levy a five-mill tax on all taxable property in the city of Morin for the use and benefit of said city. I move that we adopt resolution number A652. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Right, is this in addition to what you have to pay right now?
This is, nothing has changed. This is the same mill that we've always had. We just have to pass this resolution in order for the city to be able to receive their portion.
Oh.
He here.
I was going to say, I just, I just made a check out to give me a, well, for about $400.
Well, we'll, if we, we'll pass this and we'll get, we'll get our portion of that. So, all right, did we go, all those in favor by a show of hands?
All my kids are Texas at school, so that's all right.
Okay, that was unanimous. Uh, okay. We didn't have anybody public sign in for comments. Okay. Uh, it's time for the, uh, department head report, so it will have chief. I moved on you.
We on the front row. Good evening.
Good.
What do you need to move on? No, I'm good, I'm good. I'm not leaving.
You can go outside.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. Um, I appreciate you guys, you guys have my monthly report in front of you. If you have any questions about it. Um, right now we are almost at full staff. We have one individual that we're finishing the background check on and so far it's so good, um, looking like maybe in the next week or two we may be able to give a civil service meeting. And that will put us, uh, back on, back on top from time to time. Our new officer, Officer Wesley Gray, September the 1st of this year. Um, we're going to try to get him into the academy, but the academy started on September 13th, so there's just going to be quite enough time. So he's going to be doing field training for the next, um, 13 to 14 weeks before he can go to the academy. And I'm also off for Wesley Klaeser. As a matter of fact, both gentlemen are here tonight, young graduate from the academy. A couple of Fridays ago, so he is now certified officer, which is only, uh, a dinner, just become a step increase, but he's now a certified officer. Just been to the usual.
You get to be officer?
Yes, I am.
Just say.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Gray's the gentleman up front, one who just got hired for September the 1st. He wasn't sitting in the academy. Wesley Klaeser, I said, just graduated from the academy, just been with us a while. So he'll finish up his field training in the next week or two and be out and gone, so.
Are you jumping from here?
I'm not from here.
I am. I graduated here in 2012.
So you've been a law enforcement, law?
Uh, no, sir.
We were able to get Mr. Gray, he worked for the, uh, Department of Corrections, he worked for the, uh, it was the Commissary Unit? Yes, the Commissary Unit. So, uh, Wesley Klaeser also had some general experience, so, but when that's, he's certified officer now, he's been to the academy, so he's good.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, police committee. Alderman Frager.
Okay, I move that, um, this is from the recommendation of the chief. A step increase for Corporal Alex Meek. A step increase for Officer Brian Gorman. And a step increase for Officer Wesley, Wesley Klaeser. And also moving to a certified officer since he's graduated from the academy.
Okay, we have a motion and second for these step increases for our police officers. Any discussion? All those in favor, a show of hands. Unanimous. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, guard chief Mike Ashtrick.
Evening. Um, I'll pull this down where I can speak. August, uh, during the month of August, we had a 54 calls. That brings us to 266 for the year. We're running ahead of schedule by about plus 68 this time last year. Uh, we ran 20 storm damage calls, mostly in a three-hour period during the last tropical storm that came through. Uh, we had two structural fires, one education, and one county assist out at the chip mill. Uh, we thought we could get there and help them out at the chip mill before it got too out of hand. And we didn't want to have any loss of jobs out there, so, uh, we did that. I'm back up to full staff after a little COVID outbreak. Uh, we currently have three volunteers though with COVID that's out. I just gained back three, but now I have three more out as of today. Uh, I have a, we have a new fireman. I know Alderman Telfry's not here. Uh, we have a new fireman that we hired this month. His name is Hunter Maitmas. He's from West Virginia. He's a fully certified firefighter, one. He is already on staff. We assisted with a citizen in the, uh, north part of town here on Abernathy and Thomas Brunson. Uh, we helped him, uh, that lady burned down a house that was, she was having difficulty cleaning up, so we burned it all down to the ground for her and all she has to do is clean up a little bit of ashes that had left. Uh, and last but not least, we have a new ladder truck. It's stationed, purchased in Pennsylvania, driven by two of my guys back after a 17 and a half hour drive. It is currently being fully equipped and, uh, should be operational by eight o'clock tonight. Uh, after I load just a little bit more, larger hose with a lot more people. We're having a meeting tonight, just right after this, at seven o'clock. We're going to have a reveal and a photo session down at the railroad depot where we're having our meeting. I'd like to invite the mayor and the council members that want to come by on the truck at seven and be a part of the pictures. Uh, and any others that want to come by and see the truck. We'll have it available at seven o'clock tonight if anybody wants to see. And I'm proud of it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Our ex-sanitation manager, Mike. Mike. The, the civil service. We're on the bench, I guess. He, he did it. Oh, okay, so he wasn't going to say anything? No. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Sanitation department, uh, all our equipment is up and running as it should be, so, had a good month. Uh, we do have one piece of equipment, it's a transfer station that is, uh, not operating right now. Should have a part for it tomorrow, so we should have it back up and running. We did make a new hire, uh, this month also, so we're back at full staff. Hired Adam Maschel. Today was his first day, so, um, hope you like.
Same position?
In a thrower position.
Thrower?
Thrower truck one, yes, ma'am. We've been short one thrower for about four months now. Does that affect somebody? No, sir, we kind of held off on replacing that position and got by with the three throwers that we have until we figured out how our money was going to be for the end of the year. But, uh, looks like, uh, staff stacks are holding steady, so we decided we'll get some back on. And we do need it.
What is the starting pay for a thrower?
It's $10 now. It's my understanding it will go up to 11 in January, is that correct?
That's federal minimum wage. Any other questions of, uh, Mr. Masch? Uh, yes, I would like to, I know I've mentioned it a couple of times and the men and I have folk, uh, gone by, but the lots that are on, uh, Rock Street, the one directly, uh, next door to Everett Wallace home and at the, uh, City Pool. And the, uh, going down the street about, um, I guess maybe, uh?
On Church.
Uh-huh, yes, on Church and Rock.
The one.
Where Ms. Gwen Clark and Mrs. Jimmy.
That belongs to Edgerton. And that letter was sent, that was part of the list that you had, uh, chosen two properties off of last month. That property was already, the letter was read. Um, and we can bring that back up, uh, for condemnation, uh, at this time if you'd like. Uh, the other letter was sent, uh, this month on the previous property across from the City Park School. And, uh, we have to wait on the response on yet.
Okay, they have sat through the summer, uh, you know, with those lots not being taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what are you saying that we need to do that?
Well, on the second, on the first lot you referred to across from City Park School, we'll have to wait until the.
Well, it's, it's from the, uh, City Pool.
It's from.
It's next door to Everett Wallace home.
Well, I'm not sure where Everett Wallace lives.
You know where the City Pool is?
On Rock Street?
Uh-huh.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, right.
It's across the street.
It's the stone-looking house, right across the street. There's a white house and then there's a stone house.
It's a vacant lot.
Yes.
North of.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Belongs to Hispanic, Jim. I sent him a letter, uh, the, uh, right after City Council last month. And he has 30 days to respond. And after that period of time, then I can bring it to y'all, which it hasn't passed yet, so it'll be next City Council meeting.
Okay.
When we can get it.
Okay, so, on that one, so where are we on the one with Mrs. Gwen Clark and Mrs. Jimmy Butler?
The one on Church.
Church and Rock.
Okay, it's ready for condemnation. It was last City Council meeting also, I, I wasn't here, but, um, it, uh, it's ready for condemnation. If you'd like to, um, I can make a recommendation that we condemn a lot on, um, West Church and North Rock Street on that one.
Okay, I move that the lot on West Church and Rock Street, we can kind of condemn.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to condemn a lot on West Church and Rock Street. Any discussion?
So they haven't responded to the letter?
Neither one of them has.
Okay.
The Edgertons typically do. Uh, I send them a letter every year just about and they usually send somebody over to fight the overgrowth once a year, but this year they did not.
Okay, all those in favor, show of hands. Okay, that's unanimous? Okay. Do you have a reason? Code?
You got, I got one more.
Okay.
Can I talk to them? Uh, you know, over here on Howard, I know we've been putting this off, putting it off, putting it on, putting it off. But you know, uh, the family there, Mr. Haley, I think they've got moved away over there there because of the environment for the kids. And it's very unfortunate because I don't know if they are going to school here or going to school in camp or wherever, but I don't think they're going to stay there long and they keep trying to keep their blades up. But all of the debris that's still down is just really sad.
We do have a contractor that's given us a low bid on that and it's my understanding that he is, uh, trying to get, uh, a job, but he's working on finish where he can bring his equipment over and take care of that, uh, just as soon as we can get to it. Hopefully within the next week.
Okay.
But that is, that's actually two properties. We're going to remove a lot structure on the, uh, South property and then clean all the debris up on both of them.
Are those bidged out? Is that how it's done?
Yes.
Okay.
I noticed that the one on Rock across from where Pearl and Boys home has been cleaned up. So apparently that one was on the list?
Uh, no, ma'am, it wasn't, but normally who owns that? And that's McCoy, I believe, that owns that lot. They bush over about twice a year.
Well, it's been done.
Last week when I went by there and done, it was.
Yes.
So they did.
It was done over the weekend.
Okay, good, good deal. There's been a couple of them that, uh, and I don't know whether they just waited this year because it was so wet early in the year and maybe not to be able to mow them, but normally those lots get taken care of at least twice a year, so. But that particular lot has never been condemned. They've always managed to take care of it right when we had attention on it, so.
Anything else? I'd like to build some code.
Uh, we've got, uh, Human Development Center is building a new gymnasium out there. Uh, they've, uh, broken ground on it, poured, uh, uh, partial footings on it this week. And, uh, they'll, plans are to, uh, finish the remaining footings and then have some plumbing started on it, so that's, uh, that's coming out of the ground. And that's, uh, that's all we've got going right now.
That's a good thing.
It is, absolutely. It's going to be a nice facility out there. Small kitchen serving area, bathrooms, and full-size court.
Okay, there's no other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Straight foreman, Mr. Davis.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, we're still working on work requests, uh, still painting up some of the storm trees that's been blew down. I found one today I didn't know was two. We had till today. We got most of it up, let's finish it tomorrow. It's been a wet, another wet year, so we should trim, fighting grass and bushes and everything here. Trying to keep some of the paper picked up in the ditches around.
And that's not easy.
That's about all I've got.
Alderman Mosley, street committee, report.
Uh, we are working on getting our streets lined out and then Ricky will have to, I'm saying this wrong, measure to see how many things, what we're going after. And then we can see if we can get some bids, get the bids together and get them out.
What are the, who are the streets that we are?
Well, we're still working on it.
So you don't have your list thing?
You don't have it complete.
Any other questions of Mr. Davis? If not, thank you, sir. Uh, and community and economic development committee did meet and Alderman Marshall, I understand.
I've heard.
Send her a report.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want, uh, Ms. Ashley to come first and then I'll give her a report?
That'll be fine.
Whatever you want. Does it stand in here or?
Yeah, just right up here at the podium.
How are we all this evening? Um, I'll keep it brief. It's been another busy month. We had, um, we've been cutting up the Morem Boxing Club, um, those young men, what they're doing there on Main Street, I think it's really interesting, they're really motivated. If y'all haven't had a chance to go by there and see what they're doing, definitely give that a, um, a try. The centralized community calendar is live, seeing a really good response despite COVID-19. Um, the job letter was distributed a couple of weeks ago and I've already received notifications from other businesses and industries that want to be a part of the newsletter. Um, so I thought that was really positive and that, what I hope to do differently this month is get more hard copies distributed. Um, the Arkansas Construction Education Foundation had a workforce training session. What I've been trying to do with the Chamber of Social Media is help promote city news and, and events. Ms. Charlotte is really great about when meetings and things come up like, like, um, we've had several special call makings. And when things like that come up, Ms. Charlotte lets me know ASAP to that. Not, that only goes on our social media, but on our, um, centralized community calendar. Um, I've attended a meeting at the state capitol. I have met with InterGee, the mayor and I met with, uh, via broadband, some representatives from their company about expanding the services in our area with the grant money that's available through the governor's office. Um, what we've kind of got ongoing is the, um, land swap with the city at, at the group's property. Still meeting with citizens, um, still working on real estate development, still marketing vacant, vacant buildings on local and a statewide level. Um, we're working on special event planning during COVID-19. As some things lift, we may be able to do some more things, but we may not, so we're having lots of conversations about that. Um, and I have some scheduled training coming up at the end of the month with AEDC and Little Rock. Um, and I have some scheduled training coming up at the end of the month with AEDC and Little Rock. And the Vision Coalition continues to meet. Um, in the future, what we'd like to do, and a lot of this depends on the school systems, is the public, public incentives on social media for our local citizens. Um, in particular, our teachers, first responders, things like that, kind of our unsung heroes. Um, I'm going to be doing a completely new website for the BCEDC. Um, and Peyton Sledge has agreed to, she's the East teacher at Warren High School. She has agreed to, um, allow me to work with her students to, um, update the literature for the chamber because a lot of it is several years old. So let's get some accurate business names and numbers and things like that in there. And, um, just trying to help promote the census. Anything that I need to be doing, y'all, please reach out and let me know. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. This, ma'am. And I do have a hard copy of, um, Ms. Alderman Marshall's report. And I'll read it and then I'll give, uh, equally a copy, uh, if my glasses will stay up. Uh, it comes from, um, Alderman Angelo Marshall, September fourteenth, twenty twenty at two thirty-seven, uh, PM today. Uh, it says, "Thank you for assisting me in this presentation for this evening meeting. Highlights of the Community and Economic Development Meeting from September eighth, twenty twenty. As you are aware, we have not met since February of this year, in part mainly due to COVID-19. At that time, we had a few applications for the RFQ that was submitted to the city. We discussed the RFQ to be tabled for forty-five days for further review, in which we haven't discussed it since then. Hearing the following highlights for the meeting. Number one, revisit the RFQ qualification and strategic plans and goals for the city on a getting a recruiter. Number two, we discussed the city pool inside conditions. Number three, the spec building being dismantled and given away without the knowledge of the city council. There could have been use for the building materials for city use. Number four, the update of the chicken plant due to COVID-19. Number five, Ashley Herman gave a presentation on what she has been doing on, through the chamber slash BCEDC regarding the new website, local job peers, weekly local job posting, the Vision Coalition group, and contact with broadband for internet access in the city, and a few housing development. Cancel up, Martha. Stay up with this lady. And that is the report of what she sent me. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have a Ways and Needs Committee. Do you have any yet, thanks, Alderman Henderson? I do, I do. I'm trying to get my glasses back on to say. I should have done like, uh, Alderman Fraser and put my, uh, regular mask on. I will read my report and then I will give you a copy of it. September fourteenth, twenty twenty, Ways and Needs Committee report. The Ways and Needs Committee had a scheduled budgetary update meeting with the administration on August fifteenth, twenty twenty. And a meeting on September one, twenty twenty, to review and discuss the deferral of employee social security tax bill that was passed August the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, Notice Notice twenty twenty dash sixty-five. The deferral of employee social security notice twenty twenty dash sixty-five allows employers to defer withholding and payment of the employee portion of social security taxes for compensation paid from September one, twenty twenty through April, um, through December thirty-one of twenty twenty, and require employers to pay to defer during the period of January one, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Interest, penalties, and additional tax will begin to occur after May one, twenty twenty-one with respect of any unpaid social security taxes. The deferral provision is optional. A deferral could cause hardship upon repayment of the taxes in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one by employees. However, if Congress were to pass such legislation, if possible, it is possible that the forgiveness of provision would apply to all eligible wages, regardless of whether the employee deferred the social security tax or not. The Ways and Needs Committee recommended to the city council that we not participate in the Social Security Deferral Notice twenty twenty, twenty sixty-five, and of which we've had a city council meeting since that time. And the city did go on record, uh, not, uh, participating. However, as stated in the notice of twenty twenty, if Congress approves it, then certainly we would take advantage of it if it is a forgiven, uh, item. On August the twentieth of twenty twenty, the City of Warren Ways and Needs Committee met to begin the process of the upcoming proposed budget for twenty twenty-one. A copy of the statement of revenue and expenditures was on hand. Also, a copy of the department head's request, the department by budget percentages, and a copy of the proposed development sheet that will be utilized by the administration for the proposed twenty twenty-one budget. Also in attendance was Fire Chief Ashford, who addressed the committee in reference to a ladder truck, building construction for the truck and other equipment for the truck that totaled one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, forty-six dollars and nine cents. It has been tradition that purchases of this nature be financed through one of the financial institutions so that the city dollars are utilized for matching grant funding, et cetera. Other items of discussion were the topic of the Warren City Pool. Alderman Fraser was asked to secure the committee with information relating to costs that would bring the city pool up to par. There was also a discussion relating the city employee salaries and enhancing the benefits for the police officers in an effort to prevent a, the high turnover of staff. When this committee is notified by the administration that additional data is ready for review, a second Ways and Needs Committee meeting will be scheduled. An overview and copies of the financial data will be presented to the full city council for the council's input, review, and approval. This ends the Ways and Needs, uh, committee. And also have copies of the department head's request and those percentages that were mentioned in the report. I think we've gotten some more seats that need. Looking.
So present us on the, um, budget type of officers and what recreation of the Warren City, City Pool. Because how, how many days will you open this time?
From, from the first of June till July thirty-first.
Is that up? I would think it's gonna be open at.
No, sir. Um, by the time we got the pump fixed and ready to open and inspected, we opened the first week in June and then, um.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is that, Ms. Henderson, I know you're looking at how much will be needed for the next input, for the pool and for officers and stuff like that.
Uh, yes, we do have to have that data, uh, presented. So if you have something that you want to submit, we highly.
No, no, I'm just saying, so, uh, Alderman Fraser would know.
Usually we stay open until the week before school, but this year we didn't. Because there, we didn't have a whole lot of swimmers.
Oh, God.
And so we closed it July thirty-first.
Okay, okay.
But you are working on getting takers.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think that was his question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
We're also working on an expenditure so that you can see what the overall cost to the city was this year and last year.
Okay.
Oh, I said my, that ends my report.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, the reports, you've got a copy of the Planning Commission. They did have a meeting. Aviation Committee met, you've got a copy of that. Uh, Water and Sewer Commission, you've got their information. Parks and Rec Commission, Mr. Wagman.
Good afternoon. Don't have anything major to report. We've, uh, got almost caught up with all the mowing and bush hogging of all places underneath the parks and recs. Thanks to Mr. Ricky Joey, let us borrow his tractor. Uh, we've had a few clean up from the storms out there at the baseball field. We got the softball field stood back up today. And had a few limbs we had to clean up down the city park and just a few things like that, but nothing major.
I have to get a magnifying glass to read your report.
Well, I have to get, I'm trying to get a computer and stuff.
I know. You're really capable. Make that school full of, with that computer.
Well, I don't know, I think that way so y'all just look at it like that. Right.
You did that recently. Uh, what about, and I'm still over by the, uh, by the pool. Uh, you know where the pool is and going down? I noticed that all of that is where the baseball field is over there. I mean, who cuts that?
Well, we did, we, uh, we bush hogged Friday.
No, I walked in there this morning.
Yeah, we, we, we bush hogged.
Okay, but the edges is still there.
Oh, just around fences and all that?
Well, around the fences and close to the, to the, uh, street itself.
Oh, I don't know, we, I mean, we tried to bush hog.
It hasn't been cut, it's still real hot.
Okay, we'll go back a little bit. I mean, Ms. Kelly and I, we use, well, I mean, while bush hogged all of it, he usually keeps the little side pieces in road mode, but I haven't been over this week.
Yeah, that's where I walk every day, so that's fine, but I can see what's over in that area.
Oh, and I got.
I have to have part of it cut and then the other part grown up, but.
Okay, I got a, I guess, but they're supposed to give a price on the, uh, tree that's leaning at the far, towards the power line. I don't know, somebody reported it, but it's not really a major threat, but we can get in and get a price on it. That's good.
Anything else of Mr. Wagman?
I appreciate his help this summer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. We definitely need to get kind of a computer. I know. I bet, I gotta pin him down. Get it over. We agree with you. Okay, Housing Authority Commission, you've got their report. Cultural Center Commission, um, I want to bring this back up because Alderman Fraser is the chairman of that committee and they met back before COVID. And, uh, we had a recommendation from the school engineer on what needed to be done to correct the foundation in the girls' restroom. And so I have spoken back again, reconnected with Superintendent Cornish. And we're ready to start trying to see if we can move forward with that. But I would like for the city council to, uh, vote on the city using the, uh, school's engineer.
Didn't we, didn't we allocate like fifty thou, wasn't it a hundred thousand dollars to fix the, fix what we needed to fix right now?
Right.
And we were half and half with the school.
That's right. We got it in the budget. Since the school is already, uh, working with an engineer, that we, uh, utilize, uh, that engineer to move forward with our project. Okay, thank you. Second. Got a, a motion and second to, uh, move forward with, uh, that project and use the school's engineer. Because they are currently working with this engineer. Yes, ma'am. Okay, all those in favor by show of hands? Unanimous? Okay, thank you on that. Do we have any unfinished business? No, uh, no one signed up for public statements. We do have one piece of new business, uh, you had on the table with you. And it, it was a request that came into the office, as you can see, at four twenty-five PM today. The, uh, homecoming showcase parade is gonna be, it looks like it's gonna be a lot different from what we've had in the past, but they are requesting, um, the way I understand it, Charlotte may have to help me out on this. The, uh, homecoming court will be sitting on the courthouse lawn and it'll be a drive-through. And so they're asking, uh, the roads be blocked off for the homecoming showcase. And I don't know if, uh, Chief Hildreth is still here, but this is his first time to look at it too. So we'll be looking at that. But, uh, from the corner of West Pine and North Main and to East Cedar, North Myrtle and to East Pine. They're just gonna make a big block around and let cars drive by and see the homecoming court and then just keep them moving and let them go. And this will be October the ninth, and so that's why I, I put it in tonight's packet because we won't have another city council meeting to approve the closure of the streets for that.
I move that we close the streets.
I would like for the chief to look at it. I mean, you had an excellent point, uh, to make sure that this, this will work for us. Is he still here?
Hey, Sean's still out there?
Yeah.
And I, I apologize to him because like I said, we'll put you on the. We didn't get all of this. This was, this was all last minute stuff. I'm sorry, but I apologize. Copy for him to bear.
Yes, I, I actually got a copy, yes, ma'am. I was familiar with it. Uh, I think they talked to, um, starting parents more, school contacts, contacts last week, so we were aware of the route. The only thing that I was confused about, we'll get understanding on that, are they going to, I know they have, the route shut down. They want to put the homecoming, um, court on the, on the courthouse square. So I don't know if it's gonna have, are they gonna have traffic coming down the streets or, or blocking to ride by and see the court? Or that, that will be the one of those.
That's kind of what I understand. And I have not talked to her personally, but if you want, you and I can make a phone call tomorrow and talk to Ms. Sledge. I think this is new to everybody, something that, uh, just trying to figure out how to do it.
Like a few years ago, guys, remember, if you can bring this up, we, we had a food parlor, um, parade, um, route, when the officer turned around and found the sandwich shop. So I think that's the new route, they're gonna take that, do a short route. I think it's gonna be like a small parade and just come down, like I said, come down Main Street, then turn from the sandwich shop, then back onto, uh, Myrtle Street, going out to the court. I don't think the court is gonna be in the parade, it's gonna be on the.
Right, they're gonna be sitting there, everybody's just gonna draw down.
Right, okay, we'll get nothing better on that.
We would have to get the traffic closed.
Right, I want to.
I know that'd be approved with the chief and mayor working out the logistics. Okay. Second. Okay, we've got a motion and second to, uh, approve this with logistics worked out. All those in favor by show of hands? Unanimous? Okay. Thank you, sir.
No, no problem.
Uh, don't forget the census. If anybody that is, uh, viewing this now have not filled out your census, you could get assistance by calling my office. Um, but please do that, we need it done. Deadline is, uh, is coming quick. Uh, the Arkansas Municipal League, uh, community, you have a little, uh, flyer in your, I'm sure all of y'all are getting their emails and you know what's going on, but I just wanted you to make aware that they have a portal where you can go on and get information that you need. And then at next city council meeting, we need to take under consideration that renewed Arkansas highways. Um, if we don't, they're asking for, uh, cities to do a resolution. And we had discussed this back in, I believe, February, and, uh, we put it off till now. But this is the state turnback money for streets, and this is not a new tax. This tax is currently being paid and it will, uh, expire in twenty twenty-four unless it is renewed to become a permanent tax. And if this tax does not, if we do not vote to extend it, the City of Warren is due to lose a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars in, uh, turnback funds for streets. And that is just about what the city currently has budgeted for, uh, paving. So you can see how this will affect us and how it will hit us hard if, uh, if this, uh, if this is not passed in November. And so we'll have the resolution ready for you all to look at and hopefully pass and, uh, and, and work toward that. Uh, pay the, I need a motion to pay the bills for August twenty twenty. Second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands? Unanimous? Uh, set the meetings for October. Agenda meetings, the eighth at seven.
Agenda meetings, the eighth at seven. Set at Monday is the twelfth at five thirty.
I thought, is that not a holiday?
That's Columbus Day.
That's Columbus Day, so I move that we go to the thirteenth. That's this day.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to move the meeting to the thirteenth in, uh, on, in October. All those in favor by show of hands, unanimous? And now, uh, need to famous.
Get out of there.
I move that we're torn. Okay, all those in favor say, uh, uh, Fraser. Okay, thank you very much. Y'all can get, if you want to come by and see the, uh, trailer truck.